As all of you know, these work sessions, council work sessions are open to the public. We encourage people to attend. We do not have any interaction with citizens during the work sessions. It's a time for council to hear from staff on various matters that will be coming before us in the not-too-distant future, usually within a couple of weeks. So with that in mind, we will go to discussion item 1A, VOA rendezvous utility fee abatement request. Jase?
Excuse me. Good morning, council. Happy to present on this today. And I've also got a member, Doug Snyder. He's, I believe, the vice president with VOA, who's on the call as well virtually, so I'll have him chime in. But just for some quick background, I don't have a presentation to share with you today, but just wanted to provide some context. Typically, you see these fee waiver requests come from Anthony. I think moving forward on housing requests, you'll see them come from our department, likely from either myself or Christopher Ottinger. But what we're looking at today is a utility fee waiver request for the Volunteers of America rendezvous site. This site is located at 2366 Robbins Way. The project will offer 52 affordable units for residents 55 and older geared to those making 30% to 60% area median income. This equates to a salary of approximately $18,000 to about $42,000 per year. The project overall consists of the renovation of 30 existing units, known as Pavilion Gardens, as well as the construction of 22 new units that would be located on the vacant site adjacent to the existing units. Total project costs are estimated at about $22.5 million, and construction is expected to begin here within about a month's time. VOA is seeking utility fee waivers for the site, as I mentioned. Related water fees for the project total an estimated $31,814.80, and this includes the water meter charge, water capacity fee and unit charges, as well as the water fire line fee. Related sewer fees for the project total an estimated $89,923, and these include the sewer tap fee and capacity and unit charge fees. So total utility fee waiver requests are $121,737.80. It should be noted that this isn't necessarily a waiver in the traditional sense, as those fees needed. Looks like our applicant can't hear us. Maybe I'll look to Greg, but I'll continue here and maybe have him chime in shortly. Perfect. He can now. Sorry about that. So again, 121,000, just over 121,000, not typical waivers in kind of that sense because they are, or they need to be paid out of our, or paid into our water and sewer enterprise funds. So sometimes there's fees, as you're aware of, that can be administratively approved for permits. These utility fees are not. They are approved by you as council because they would have to be supplemented by that general fund. We've seen similar projects from a housing standpoint come with these requests. That would include the CASA project off the bypass, as well as the residences at Dry Cedar Creek, just to provide some examples there. So it is staff's recommendation that council do consider this request, as this project will improve on and provide some much-needed senior affordable housing in the area. With that, I'll look to Doug Snyder. Doug, if you want to add more just about maybe VOA's vision here, and we'll kind of go from there.
And Jase, how many minutes, couple minutes are you looking for?
Yeah, a minute or two, I think, would be just fine.
Okay. Great. Well, I think the best way to share the vision is to show our graphics package, which I have ready to share here. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. So obviously, we're centered in southeast Montrose. Oh, I can't, I can't flip pages when sharing, I don't believe. So maybe I'll just go to another page here.
And Doug, if you're unable to share, one thing I will mention is that all the information that you had sent over to me is in the packet, so that is publicly available. It is kind of right in front of council's eyes here as well. So if you're having issues sharing, I wouldn't worry about it too much. I think everyone does have the information you'd be looking to share here, so.
Okay. Thank you. Try one last share here. This graphic, I call it the VOA campus. As many of you probably know, VOA has historically been a top employer in Montrose. And we have two sides of our business, healthcare and housing, and they're co-located on the VOA campus here. We have the Pace Center and Assisted Living in the center, and then the housing rings it. We have two senior properties there, one family property there, Pavilion Gardens, which has struggled to stay full and reach rent, max rents, and so forth over the years. So our vision is simply to convert the 30-unit Pavilion Garden from family to age 55 and up, and then expand on the vacant land we have on the campus to provide more additional older adult housing to meet the growing demand for older adult senior housing. And, you know, the city's Housing Needs Assessment study that was done last summer that supported that and was super helpful. We applied twice for tax credits to CHAFPA. We were successful last fall. It's a state 4% award. So we're going to make this conversion, and what's nice is we replatted that lot, Lot 5, into two lots. And if we do a good job, we'll be able to come back and do some additional 40-some units of senior housing. So that's briefly the vision. We're looking to close in late July. This will be done in about a year. We're going to rigorously renovate Pavilion Gardens buildings. They're 25 years old. They need it, and then add the new units. You know, one benefit of all this is, you know, since we have such a major presence in Montrose and on this site, is the service we'll be able to provide. There's a myriad available through our two HUD 202 properties there, plus the Pace Center that we have. So there's a direct connection for our residents to health, wellness, financial, volunteer opportunities, you know, food items, related items, care river respite services already coordinated through our staff over there. And these services will allow the projects older adults, you know, to age in place and keep them out of more costly senior housing accommodations. You know, and these services benefit older adults and seniors, and it keeps, we're going to have a few very low-income residents, and they're going to, the project's going to keep them from sliding into homelessness. And I'll just pause there.
Perfect. Thank you, Doug. And happy to answer any questions.
The only question I have is, I think this is a fantastic project. I love the fact that it's, the range of AMI is from 30 to 60. I think it's fantastic. The only thing I would ask is that, do the offsets, are they primarily focused on Lot 5, or are they for renovations to water and sewer through Pavilion Gardens as well as Lot 5?
This would be solely, I should say, for the new construction. So water tap fees have already been paid for those existing units. It's just the rehab and renovation of those existing units as is. So this would be for the new construction.
Thank you. Did we provide any assistance to the original development?
You know, I don't know that I have an answer to that. I could certainly dig in and find that before it goes to the hearing, though.
Judy Ann, anything?
I'm really impressed to see in the plans that you're doing some outdoor recreation things also, instead of simply having it be apartment houses or whatever. You have some areas for these people to get outside and do something. So I appreciate that inclusion.
Thank you. That's an important feature, to get some nice outdoor amenities. You've got a roomy site. You've got room to do those kind of things. Another thing we're excited about is we're going to add balconies in the new building to give people their own little private outdoor space. So that's going to be a really nice feature, too.
Any further questions, council? Nothing further, Jase?
Seems like I have more interest in senior housing than I used to.
And this would go to a hearing on, I believe it's July 16th, so the next, it won't be the typical kind of one-day turnaround you've seen from me lately, so.
Okay. Moving on to item 1B, Colorado State Forest Service grant application request. And we have Christopher Ottinger and Daniel Payne.
Good morning, Mayor, and council members. Yeah, the Parks Division is requesting approval to apply for Colorado State Forest Service, Colorado Inflation Reduction Act, urban and community forest grants. The purpose of this grant is to partially fund a city forester position that will focus on urban forestry within the city limits, especially in areas identified as disproportionately impacted under the Federal Justice 40 Initiative. The grant will provide partial funding for the position over a five-year period, and no matching funds are required, as the expenses will be reimbursed. The new position will involve managing the existing tree trimming and replacement program, overseeing contractors for tree work on city-owned trees, facilitating community outreach and education in line with the Tree City USA requirements, monitoring crew and volunteer hours for the Tree City USA application. They'll be creating a park tree planting program and seeking additional grant funds for maintaining the urban forests. City staff recommends that the city's council approve the submission of the urban and community forestry grant application for $250,000 to support the establishment of new city forester position within the city Parks Division. This grant application is due July 31, and notice award will be September 1. Do you guys have any questions?
I'm assuming that the RFQ for this will be certified forest, or arborist?
Yes. Yep. ISA-certified arborist.
And here, did you talk about the, I'm sorry, I lost my page. I lost my word. Disproportionate in which way? Do we have too many trees or not enough trees?
The biggest thing about all of Montrose, it's not inventoried. The last tree inventory was done in, I want to say, 1995, and it was never put into the Colorado State Forest Service registry. So that's a big part of this grant, and this person needs to complete is that inventory of all the trees and get it updated into the Forest Service system.
Will that also give us an indication of the health of the trees?
Yes.
So they'll all be bored?
Yeah, trees, well, they don't bore them.
Well, that, whatever. When they stick the thing in to fear what they are.
Yeah. Yeah, there'll be a tree assessment done. It'll also come with a work plan with it, which trees need attention now, which trees can wait, and which trees are doing good.
I know that you guys have been, on the parks, have been doing a great job of trying to keep up with the trees, but it's an overwhelming load.
Yep.
So I know you guys are overloaded, and I think this is a great idea.
Anything further? If not, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 1C, municipal court software purchase request. We have our municipal court judge, Aaron Maxwell, lead court clerk, Jody Moreland, and our city clerk, Lisa Del Piccolo.
Thank you, Chris. Good morning. The municipal court, as you know, based on the memo, has been using the same court software for the last 27 years, which would be an impressive statement if that program was efficient and effective. And once upon a time, it may have been, but that time has passed. We have an opportunity to change that at this point, and we have been dedicated to doing research of regarding other options that are out there, what other cities like ours have used, and what they like and dislike about their programs. We believe with the TylerTech software that's being proposed, we'll be able to provide better quality services to our public and to be able to work better with our other city departments hand in hand. We have had input from IT, kind of from the get-go, with regard to both the TylerTech software that we're looking at, as well as other ones that we wanted to make sure we looked into. Partially because of the price tag of this, we're well aware that it's a lot of money. We wanted to make sure that it would be the right move for our city, but also that if IT had concerns, we wanted to address those early on. I think we have, and Greg has stated that we have their approval, and also have looked into whether or not it would be compatible with the software and the computers and the systems that we have now, and it would be. In addition, it would be compatible with other programs within the city that our court needs to, has to, work with. Right now, there's a lot that is done manually. PD is currently transitioning over to using something called DigiTicket, which is a type of software that will help in accuracy and efficiency on both their end and ours. This software works hand in hand with that, so that when an officer fills out a citation, as it stands currently, they handwrite in every bit of information, including all of the identifying characteristics of a person, the charge that a person is accused of violating, the subsection, the penalties. And with each of those things, there's a risk of error. DigiTicket alleviates that because it auto-fills based on the statute that the person has allegedly violated. Well, there's a risk of error that's alleviated on their end with the DigiTicket, and then on our end, currently, the way it works is our clerks receive these handwritten citations, look at the citations, and then manually go back and forth entering the data from the citation into the computer program, thereby creating a case, but also risking one tiny little detail, throwing everything off or being inaccurate. And so there are a lot of human errors that can happen in a system like that that would get alleviated with a more automated process, which this program does have. So what we're not talking about is taking the human element out of it. We understand that we are a court for the people of the people, but we want to take the human error out of it. And so we do, we do believe, and we feel like we've been shown from the demonstrations, that that is something that the Tyler technology will help with. Again, we're aware that the asking price is significant, but considering the amount of time and energy that is spent correcting errors, or on the phone with tech support, or asking IT to come assist with, anytime there's been an update, not every time, but many times, there's been an update with our current software, they, a day or two later, have to reel it back and unimplement that, fix the bugs, and then try again. And it's caused numerous issues for us. There's been a clear transition away from the full-court software, which is what we've been using throughout the state of Colorado. And like I said, we have reached out to a number of these other jurisdictions to see not just what they like about Tyler, because I don't, we didn't want just the sort of confirmation bias where we're just told what we want to hear because we're excited about it. We wanted them to tell us what they dislike as well. And we had some frank conversations with people who didn't like certain aspects of it. So we have taken that positive and negative feedback into account in deciding that this is still, overall, the best way for the court to move forward. So we are excited about the way we feel it could help our court run, the way it could help communicate with the public, the way it could communicate with our legal team, actually, as well, which I failed to mention, but I think was mentioned in our memo, stating that, as it stands currently, the legal team can't even access their own cases. They are unable to see what documents have been filed. They're unable to see the register of actions on what has happened in previous court proceedings, on cases in which they're prosecuting. So this would give them, they call it a portal, it'd give them access to see all of that, rather than requesting our clerks print up the register of actions, scan it to them, email it to them, or make copies of motions from defendants, and vice versa, and distribute it. There's a lot of time that gets involved in that process that would be saved. So I think, at least from my perspective, it would benefit both of our departments in a pretty significant way, to have something that's compatible with IT, with PD, with legal, and works hand in hand with our city departments. So there's a lot more that goes into it, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you all have, but that's kind of the basic reasons and ideas behind us making this request.
Chris, have you had an opportunity to review the service agreement?
I have not completed it, but yes. We do have the opportunity. I know Greg, he's reviewed it. I'm going to review it as well.
Okay. Is this one of those agreements, you take it or leave it?
I can't say yes to that, because I don't actually know, but I'm going to go ahead and venture to guess that anything that we try to change there will likely be
Pushed back.
Pushed back. Yeah.
I think it's telling that the legal software company has sent us a document that's 90 pages long. And it's very exhaustive, because when I was skimming the document and skimming, because skimming is about all I'm going to do at that point, is it details meals, hotels, airports, internet access, and it's very exhaustive. So having your more experienced eye on it would be beneficial for us as well.
Are you sure you don't want to do it for me?
I tried. I tried. I gave it my best.
Yeah. Yeah, this is going to be exhausting.
Schedules of implementation that, but I'm getting kind of the nod from our other components of our team.
Are we getting a nod from Blaine?
Yes, absolutely.
The one question I would have is actually for Greg. That, I know that software programs of this nature are very expensive. Is this kind of in line with some of the things you've seen?
Yeah, it is. And it's always, so TylerTech stuff is best of breed. So they know that, and they're going to charge accordingly. The way I always, I might have mentioned this to you before, I don't know if I have, but when you, when I'm assessing a piece of software, I look at it as another employee, right? Because that's really the goal, is just to reduce the amount of time and work and effort that other employees are doing. And so when you look at it through those glasses, it makes it a little bit easier to absorb that number. So my rambling statement is yes. That's a long yes.
Thank you.
And I'll just reiterate what the judge said, but usually, council, you see these requests at budget time. So even though that's coming up, the team needs additional time in order to implement this big software project, which is why you're hearing the request now, so that it could be purchased in 2024, and then started being implemented in 2024 through the beginning of 2025, and be ready to go as soon as possible. So that's why, you know, for the public as well, I just wanted to note that you're not seeing here at council every piece of software that we end up upgrading, or new software. We usually build that into the budget in advance, but the timing doesn't always work well. So thank you for considering this mid-year request.
This will come before us on the 16th?
That's our understanding.
I guess I have one more question. Matt, since you deal a lot with PD and the court, have you had an opportunity to look through this?
There we go.
I can't do that.
I haven't had a chance to look through the 90-page agreement. I can echo and the Judge Maxwell's comments, is the court has long outgrown the current software. It's, it is using as a prosecutor in that court for four years. It forced certain changes in how I prosecute a case because I didn't have access to the case number. I didn't have access to the court docket information. I'd have to ask for it. So my understanding is that this piece of software will remedy a lot of those things, make it more readily available to the legal department to actually really prosecute the cases in the best way possible.
Any other questions, council? Any other?
Yes, please. So census is not budgeted. Where's the money going to come from?
He doesn't know.
Mics are thin on the ground today.
Or money.
Yeah, or the answer.
It would just be out of our undesignated fund balance and general fund.
And then we'll do a supplemental budget, right?
Correct. It'd show up in December at the supplemental budget.
That hasn't already been taken away?
It hasn't.
That's still available, I'm saying.
It's still available, yes. And there'll be other projects as well in December for the supplemental budget, but we'll only need a supplemental if the general fund is going to go over. So you might not even see it at that time.
Staff, any other comments? Great. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to item 1D, Public Workshop and Rio Grande Right-of-Way additions. William Reese.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, and members of the public. As usual, we do bring these annexations to a work session before we bring them to the regular city council. I do have a brief presentation to share, if I can steal the screen. Okay. So this annexation is in regards to the new public workshop, which has been discussed at city council before, and I know that we've discussed the acquisition of the property at previous meetings. That project is moving forward, but the property is not actually in the city limits at this time. And so in order to develop the new shop under city regulations rather than county regulations, we are proposing annexing the property. This here is the proposed schedule. You may notice that we do not have a date for the resolution to set a hearing date. That is not a requirement if the property is owned by the city, so we can skip that step with this annexation. We do plan to take this to the Planning Commission on July 24, and we are planning the official hearing date for August 6 with a second reading on August 20. Just one note, the servers that we use for our GIS data has been down, so this map is not quite as polished as I usually like to make them, but does still contain the relevant information. This is technically two annexations. The new public workshop is a site approximately 23.3 acres in size, and then with this project, we also plan to annex a bit of the Rio Grande Right-of-Way, which is about 1.14 acres, so we can clean that up. The trail that goes between these two areas is already in the city limits, and so these two properties are not contiguous to each other. As a result, we do have to treat them as two separate annexations, and when it comes time to vote, these will be voted on separately. This area is within the city's urban growth boundaries, sewer and water service areas, and the area is urbanizing, and the properties meet the 1/6 contiguity requirement as required by the state. Of course, any annexation does require an associated zoning designation. There's a handful of exceptions, but most properties owned by the city are zoned P public district, which is intended to provide for uses and services of a public, nonprofit, or charitable nature. Our current public works facility is also zoned P, just for the record. Because this is city-owned property, we think that the P zoning is most appropriate here as well. The surrounding area is zoned P public district, R3 medium-density district, B3 The surrounding area is zoned P, Public District, R3 Medium Density District, B3 General Commercial District, I1 Light Industrial District, and I2 General Industrial District. This map is taken from the county GIS map, so where it says IH, that's just the indication of the current county zoning. This is the annexation map for the public workshop addition. This consists of two parcels, both of which are owned by the city, and 100% of the perimeter borders existing city limits. This has actually been identified as an enclave for quite some time now, and so this annexation will also serve to finally clean up one of those enclaves. And then this is the Rio Grande Right-of-Way Edition plat, just across the rec trail. This is also eligible and will help to clean up the right-of-way so that there's no confusion about whether the road is part of the city or the county, no confusion about maintenance, stuff like that. Our future land use map indicates that this is designated partially as residential mixed density medium, although that's not the intended use of the property, and also partially as river corridor, which indicates that the area is appropriate for outdoor recreation and associated uses, which we do have the rec trail there. This is in Growth Area 1, representing the most cost-effective areas for the city to grow, and as mentioned, this is an enclave. And so in summary, the properties are eligible for annexation. Because the site is greater than 10 acres, we will need to file an annexation impact report with the county. We do find that the proposed P zoning will be consistent with our annexation policies, the public health, safety, and welfare, and the comprehensive plan, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions?
Yeah, well, when you said that the property that is divided by the trail, the two properties, so the property that is currently where our proposed public works building would be, the one that's IH, the big one, is that two properties because of the trail going through it? Or is the two properties that plus the small piece up along Rio Grande?
So that is two parcels, but when I said that, if you look, it might be hard to see on here, but if you look, there is a red line that cuts through this outlined blue area. Those are two distinct parcels, but the, when referring to the two separate properties, which will have to be annexed separately, that is the, because the rec trail divides the other Rio Grande Right-of-Way addition.
Okay, so on the plat, when it shows that, that from, it has the dashed line across there, that's the separation of the parcels?
Correct.
Verifying. Because when you said two, but there's three properties, it's kind of, that was a little bit confusing to me, but now that I understand.
Yes, sorry. Two annexations, but this large one, that's 23.3 acres, that is two properties, but both of them are owned by the city.
Perfect. Thank you.
Could add that the northern parcel of that is one that was purchased recently. So the southern kind of diamond-shaped one was already owned by the city, and that may be why it doesn't look like what you've seen recently, is that we, the purchase we made, you know, earlier this year was of just the northern half of that, or the bigger portion to the north.
Excellent. Thank you.
So you're saying that the smaller portion has belonged to the city for several years, but it was never annexed?
Correct.
Oh. I'm sorry, that surprises me, that it wasn't annexed at the time it was purchased.
I believe that was 2016 about, when that was purchased from the same property owner that the northern piece was purchased from. And then we own the property south of this as well that is annexed into the city. So south of that kind of straight line, that's what we call the Anderson Road property, and that has been annexed.
Thank you.
Questions, comments? None? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, man.
And item 1E, Victim Assistance Law Enforcement, Vail Grant Application, and for that, we have Chief Hall.
And the dog.
This is Chantel Bainbridge, our victim service coordinator and the dog, Apple. Mr. Mayor and city council, coming before you today, Montrose Police Department is requesting permission to apply for Victims Assistance Law Enforcement grant. We come before you every year to request permission to apply for this particular grant. For the tune of $55,150, currently, the Montrose Police Department employs a victim services coordinator and a victims advocate. The grant would pay for 47% of the victim services coordinator's salary, Chantel Bainbridge. And then $25,000 for our victims advocate, Marissa Abada, who I'd like to congratulate. She actually just got off training here just this last week, and she'll be moving to service victims on weekends. And we have seen an increase in the number of victims that we are serving from 2022 to the tune of 389 total victims to 2023, substantial increase at 609 victims. The state of Colorado in 2021 passed legislation that's requiring suspects be advised within 48 hours of arrest, beginning in April of 2022, which has required victim services to actually be applied on the weekends to discuss rights, inform victims of protection orders, and to ensure that they have the ability to exercise their right to be present and to speak. The Montrose Police Department wishes to continue to improve upon the services provided to victim services availability seven days a week. In the office, weekend advisements coverage, helping victims with obtaining civil protection orders and applying for crime victims compensation, and also to access other community resources. The police department also wishes to reduce the burnout caused by vicarious trauma and maintain longevity with future advocates and employees with this type of position, which is why we did employ the second victims advocate. We had Chantel for 20 years. Yep, so that's awesome. And the Montrose Police Department, of course, is mandated by the Colorado Constitution to guarantee certain rights to crime victims of violent crime, so that we employ a full-time victim services coordinator and then a full-time advocate to provide those services. I will tell you, there is a little bit of disappointing news in the realm of victims advocate funding, both from the federal government and from Vail. So the federal government, we apply every year for the other half essentially of both of Chantel, and we're planning on applying for a VOCA grant for the other half of Marissa's salary. However, we were advised by the federal government that there will be a massive cut in funding for victim services. They are saying that is because of COVID and during the year, years of COVID, and then the year following, coming out of COVID, that they were not collecting for victim services, which I find odd and terrible. Also, we were advised that from the Vail Board, that they have seen a shortfall in their funding to the tune of about 29%. That doesn't mean that we will receive a 29% in, or a 29% cut in our funding, that's just what they advised us. We serve the most victims in the seven judicial districts, so we're hopeful that that cut will be less, but we are expecting to receive a cut in funding. There are some potential other options that we're exploring right now. One, Apple.
She's doing the show, by the way.
Yeah, she is. One of those potential funding options is from the opioid grant, and I know our mayor pro tem sits on that board, and we've had a conversation with Sue Hansen to potentially try to supplement that cut in funding through that grant opportunity, so we may be coming back for additional permission. So as it stands right now, we're asking for authorization to apply for the grant and then the authorization to move forward with all the administration of the grant and things that go along with that. Happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
That'll be coming to us in two weeks?
Yes.
Since you mentioned that, when Attorney General Phil Weiser was here over this last week, I met with him a number of times, and one of the things that he had mentioned was his admiration and respect for the city of Montrose's PD and all of the programs, the ancillary programs that we have in place, victim advocacy and mental health and wellness for employees and staff. And he mentioned that he thinks that Montrose is the model, the model, for this in the state of Colorado. And I just wanted to say thank you and congratulations on all of your hard work and for setting the bar really high.
I think we have set the bar high, and I really appreciate his compliments. We did meet with him, I think we, both Bill and, we all met with him, along with our academy director, and we actually had a great conversation, so. And I think he's going to take some things back. We briefed him on the Clean Slate Act and how that's inundating our records department right now, and we're having difficulty fulfilling our requirements to the district attorney's office and discovery, and he agrees that that's an issue, and it was great, we were able to meet with him, and hopefully we can maybe come to some future resolution as far as additional legislation to ease that burden. So it was a really good meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments from council? Okay. That concludes our discussion items. Item number two is general city council discussion. I guess I would lead that off by saying that actually the four of us attended the ribbon cutting for the Children's Museum on Saturday morning, and that was really, really neat. A lot of fun, can't wait to go back. And our city engineer, Scott Murphy, very involved in that. And what I found really, really interesting was that they, the folks who have established the museum, correct me if I'm wrong on this, actually did not pay any contractor fees for construction of all of the interactive items that they have there. All of the time was volunteered, correct?
Yeah, everything to date, outside of some marketing, has been 100% volunteer-based. Pretty impressive.
So, yeah, if, I would encourage you to go, and if you've got kids, take them, but you'll enjoy it without kids too. And Judy Anne was panning for gold, weren't you?
Well, yes, but I had more fun with the bubble tube. Sorry, Scott. Scott's the owner of the water pan, the water solution.
Right. But all very cool stuff, so again, I would encourage you.
Well, I think too, it's good to point out that it's set up for parent-child.
Yes. Yes.
Very interactive.
Well, as an educator, I was really impressed to see that everything in that entire space is an educational opportunity. It's also a very fun activity, and so they play in well together. I was impressed at the things that I think I could have learned if I'd have taken the time to read all the different posters and get it, you know. One of the things I thought was the funniest was they have a workout weight bench type thing where you can, whatever. But it's for like a five-year-old.
Little junior treadmills in front of the mirror.
It's not like the big one that I have in my workout room, you know, that you lift weights and under your legs and all that, because it's only this big. It's this little kid thing, and I loved it. But I thought I was probably a little heavy to get on it. I would try it out.
We failed to get photos of that, but.
I felt bad that I didn't get a chance to use the little backhoe they had out there.
Yeah, you were eyeing that, weren't you?
Yeah.
I got to play in the kinetic sand, it was awesome.
In fact, when they took our picture to ribbon cutting, the three of us were standing side by side, and Dave was over here. It looked like he'd brought his three kids in.
So, any other council discussion?
I have something, three or four things. How's that bother?
Oh, boy.
Hotel tax increase. We've been discussing that ongoing for a long while. We've got an election coming up later this year. If we hurry, we could probably get in on that. How do we take that forward, and what do we do to try to encourage this?
Is there time?
I believe there's time. I think we would have to have, and I can speak to that.
It's July sometime, isn't it?
Yes, it's 100 days before Election Day, so we would have to notify the clerk that we have a question by the end of July. I think we have to have our ballot language set, I think, first Friday, about that timeframe in September. So there is a small window.
So that's the first step, is to make sure we have time to do it. We have talked about it quite a bit over the past, so it's just a timing issue if we, when we had researched, we did all the research, we found out what the communities across Colorado, especially our region, are charging. We're under 1% for our lodging tax here in the community. When we talked about it last time, I think we were all in favor of doing it, we just didn't know what the right timing was to do it. And we, if we were to move forward, we could pull up all that past research, I think we were looking at a 3% or 4%, which is still much smaller than the average across the state, but would be more significant than what we have now being under the 1. And I also believe our major hoteliers in town were supportive of us doing that, and they didn't see that as something damaging to them, because a lot of the money that's raised through lodging tax goes right back into marketing for tourism and filling heads in beds at the hotels. So their partnership with the City of Montrose Office of Business and Tourism, as well as probably the Chamber of Commerce, it was in the past, they worked together, I don't know right now if they have a committee or anything working on that, but we could approach them about that as well. So I know the Rathbones in favor, and the Marriott are two newest hotels, and they're both in favor of us doing something.
And I know, I think, I think it's important to point out the obvious, and that is, it's truly a tourist tax. Our local citizens don't pay it unless, of course, they're staying in a hotel or renting a hotel room for a guest or something. But generally speaking, out of town folks pay that tax for the privilege of sleeping in Montrose.
And utilizing our facilities.
Right.
Yes, and we don't have, really have impact fees here in Montrose. This could be allocated in such a way where, we did the research on what you can use lodging tax for, and a lot of communities use it for different things. So I think that gives us flexibility if you wanted to, if we move forward or something, you could dedicate so much to street impacts, you could dedicate it to law enforcement, you can dedicate it to trails and open space, parks amenities, all those kinds of things. So it's pretty flexible.
So if I understand correctly, Lisa, that council would simply have to give the nod that we'd like to consider pursuing it, we wouldn't have to take formal action, and you could just notify the clerk that we are considering a ballot question?
That's my understanding. So 100 days before Election Day is Friday, July 28th, so we would just need to know for sure by that date. Usually, the county clerk reaches out in mid-July and says, hey, are you thinking of any ballot questions?
So notifying, notifying the clerk would not require council action, only a nod, right?
So if we are going to put anything on the ballot, we would have to go, you know, put a resolution or ordinance. I believe that's what the charter states, it's either by ordinance or resolution, so.
But that's in September, not notifying the clerk in July.
Right, right, yes. I mean, we could notify the clerk without, but I mean, it would make sense if we know we're going to be doing this, then we can get it on the next agenda and get that going.
Well, we've got 24 hours.
Maybe not the next agenda.
Not that agenda, but if we would like, like I said, the charter, and I'd have to, you know, confirm, read the charter one more time, but I believe it states that it's either by ordinance or resolution. So if we want to hurry this up, we could get this on next work session and then the following council meeting.
Well, I think that the thing that council needs to consider, and I don't know if we're in a position to give that nod yet, is it appropriate with the general election in November with all of the other ballot issues that are going to be before us, or is it more appropriate to do it at the general municipal election of the city? I'm not opposed to it, I'm just wondering if the timing is right for November.
If you, if all of you would like, we could have a discussion at the next work session and bring all that data that we compiled last time, and then we can talk in more detail and have a good discussion on it. And then if we don't technically have to do a resolution ordinance just to notify the clerk, that would still give us time by the end of July to do a letter of intent or something, whatever we call it, if we choose to move forward. But that way, we'd have all the data and research.
Would you guys like to have it for council discussion at the next work session?
Very much so.
Okay. Okay, we'll do it.
Okay, thank you, Lisa.
Do you have another one?
Yeah, oh yeah, I'm not done yet. How about a council pay increase in four years? None of us will be on the board at that particular time, or we would have to have been reelected.
Why are you looking at me? I don't get that. I think all of you should be paid as much as your work to the community.
Well, wait a minute.
You'd be given money too, to the city, right?
Doug has to pay into the fund, Doug. No, I think that right now, based on cost of living increases and the state of the pay of council members across the state, I am not in objection to talking about that, having further discussions about that. But I'm not specifically advocating for it either, but I would love to have more in-depth discussion, find out more, like what, across the state, what city council members are normally getting paid.
And I would agree with that, and I'm not necessarily for it or against it, but I'm not in favor of having it considered at the next, at the general, during the general election.
No, I don't have, I don't think so either.
We're not in a hurry.
But it's something to put on the burner for future discussion. Go ahead.
I like spent two and a half days last week going to the Jolt meeting that the county put on, which is Northwest Colorado Energy Summit. I think it was extremely informative, talking about some of the difficulties we have, both with gas and electricity, and the concern as some of these coal plants are going offline. Talked a little bit about how energy has moved back and forth across the grid that we're in. So there was a lot of discussion on that, and I think there's a lot to come out of that. Some of it could certainly affect our budget as prices continue to rise due to lack of supply. And their next meeting is, I think next year is going to be, I think, wonderful place in the world, Gillette, Wyoming. But I think it would be very appropriate for us to have one of our engineering or public works folks attend that meeting. I think there were a lot of information there that would be, could be directly focused on some of our needs and potential upcoming needs, dealing with both wind, solar, nuclear, and other forms of power generation. Coal is continuing to be, plants are continuing, coming offline, and in some cases, we really don't have replacements for them. So some of them are getting some extension times on that. So I think it'd be very worthwhile to make certain that we start getting into that loop and participating in it. So I would, I would just really like to encourage that. I thought, I found it very informative. One of the things that they're looking at with generating DC power and sending that across to our lines, because you don't have line loss that AC power does, but when you do that, you've got to have rectifiers on both ends of your process. So it's kind of an expensive way to go, but it does eliminate some of the losses. One of the things that we're talking about is when a dam has, is generating power through hydraulics or hydro, the off-hours, their generators are sitting there doing nothing. Now they're looking at the possibility, once they pump it out of there, if they're pumping it into another lake, during the off-hours, when those generators are just sitting there doing nothing, continue to let them run and pump that water back from this lake to the one above it. So they're looking at several different ways of how to generate power and maintain it and use it in a more equitable way across the board 24 hours a day. So I found it very, very helpful. I think there was, were some things there that probably would have been helpful maybe to our public works, engineering departments, that were certainly above and beyond me, but I'd just like to recommend that when that comes around next year, that we, we participate in it and have somebody attend the meeting.
And it's called the Jolt Conference next year as well?
Yeah.
That's the national name for it?
Yeah. Joint Organization Leading Transition.
You got something else, Doug?
Well, I think I'll quit there.
Good.
Yeah, I have a couple things, and both of them are, the committees that I, extra, one, some of the committees that I serve on. One is the Region 10 Board, and it's relevant to what we had discussed this morning with the VOA project, is that the state budget for the area agency on aging has been dramatically reduced and limited, as well as federal funding. So a lot of our seniors are having a lot of trouble staying in their homes. So I was really excited to see this project for VOA come forward, because having a 30% to 60% AMI availability for seniors 55 and over really dovetails really well into that need, because it allows seniors to be in areas where they have support, as well as being able to actually afford to be in that unit and not be at risk of exposing them to homelessness. Region 10 also has, talks about broadband, and there's a lot going on with broadband. Region 10 has been the leading proponent and activator of mid-mile broadband in this entire region, and we're actually coordinating with three other regions to get broadband availability, but there, again, legislation from the state has put a lot of limits on what we can and cannot do, and where and where we cannot access internet. They're focusing on final mile and not middle mile, which creates a lot of hardship. All the funding mechanisms from the state are geared toward final mile, which takes a lot of money out of the pots needed for us to establish that middle mile. It's like building an elaborate hotel with an elaborate fire system and no water main. So it's, to me, it's kind of a little contrary to what we'd want to do. The other thing I wanted to bring up is that, I think that's everything from Region 10, with the Colorado Opioid Abatement Council, had a great meeting with our Region 14 representatives, and one of the availability of funding for some of these programs, we're trying to encourage a little bit more innovative thinking for our opioid abatement funds, and that, this really dovetails really nicely into what we're looking forward to and trying to encourage. We will be hearing tomorrow night on some of the settlements from Mr. Magliaro, and just for the public to be aware that Montrose, the city of Montrose, has chosen to take our money and allocate it to our Region 14, and Region 14 is basically the same footprint as 7th Judicial District, and all of those entities pool that money for best use in the region. Some of our smaller areas only get $400 from settlements, smaller municipalities. So by pooling that money, it allows us a lot better access and a lot better availability of funding to fund larger infrastructure and supportive programs for opioid abatement. And so it's really exciting to see some of these settlements coming forward, and we'll hear more about that tomorrow night from Mr. Magliaro.
Thank you, sir. This follows, nothing?
I've been too sick to do anything. Thank you.
You sound much better.
Glad you're better.
Okay, time for staff comments. Silence is golden.
Did we frighten?
I can talk about the roundabout.
So Niagara is on track, even with the rains, it kind of accounted for it, to open the afternoon
of the 3rd. So, for all the weekend, we should be open. With all the other activities going on and kind of our past attendance, we were kind of shying away from ribbon cutting, seemed like a lot for the week of the 4th, but if somebody feels strongly that we should, certainly we can squeeze one in. But some of the initial feedback I received was kind of in a similar boat, but, so yeah, the big picture, we are looking at moving a couple of the bigger projects around going into next year. Originally, I think, we talked about, as this roundabout finishes up, we'll take a decent gap and then start the Woodgate Roundabout this fall. Unfortunately, a project we were scheduling for 2025, 2026, was a bridge replacement on the Lutonheiser Canal on Ogden Road, so this is just east of the new apartments. It is not looking like it's going to make it as long as we thought it would, and so we're actually going to move a couple of projects around, looking to start that this off-season, this November, and that'll push the Woodgate project to start probably in March of '25. So, still a summer '25 completion, its start date just moves out a little bit, because we can't close Ogden and Oak Grove at the same time. So, big picture, you'll see all that through the budget process, and the impacts are kind of the same in, in more or less the same years, but it's just, our shift's around a couple months, but, yeah, for anybody who's counting on Woodgate starting in October, that'll probably be March now.
I have a question, are you done on that subject?
Yep, that's okay.
On South 5th? Could you give us a bit of an update? Because I note that between Townsend and Cascade, looks like they completed the work, but then they, way down on the San Juan Inn or so, what's the progression there?
Yeah, it was kind of funny the day you asked about, do they pave intermittently? They, the next day, I think they had started paving, and it's kind of the same thing, as the opportunity arose that they were able to get that section buttoned up. But the water line will be another couple of weeks yet, so they, we're getting close to finishing, the main line will work on disinfection, and then they transition over all the services and then, or cross over the main connections and then transition over the services, which takes several weeks to do. They're finishing the storm work this week on Park, so that, all that work that went from Townsend was a storm line that was coming down in order to drain off that intersection of Park and South 5th. So that'll be finishing up. I think similarly, they may, if the schedule allows, you'd probably have a good opportunity to get Park and Junction completely buttoned up, and then the last finish-up would be Junction to San Juan. So that's the most likely progression, if the schedule works out. You know, we kind of generally work with them on a, almost on a day-by-day basis of, what can you open up, you know, what can you intermittently open up, you know, can you shift these resources over here, because this is a higher impact, you know, kind of moving around. So it is very fluid, and we'll work to kind of keep our weekly updates going out, but that's our preferable progression, is kind of button up, just keep working towards east. The water line will be the longest lead though, at the far eastern end.
The second part of that is, I've noticed that those intersections where they've worked, I assume it's the heavy equipment has created some pretty large man-eating manholes. Will there be, at the end of the project, will they be coming back to do work right on the intersections where they've created the puddles?
Yeah, generally, so, and that's something we struggle with on every job, is the work itself can take, you know, we think we're going to patch these areas, and then the work itself doubles that, just from the truck traffic that comes with it, and neighboring blocks unfortunately too. So, we keep an eye on those things, generally we'll work to patch the bad areas. Obviously, when it's all done, it'll all be, you know, completely new pavement the whole way, but we do keep an eye on those things, and it's, it's hard, because you know, you patch them here, then it'll fail right next to it too, you know, right after. So typically, that'll happen towards the end, that, you know, once the truck traffic is done, then we kind of patch the areas that were added that need it, and then, you know, come in with the overlay right behind, so you get that structure you need to then support it, you know, going into the future.
Thanks.
Yep.
Any further staff?
It's kind of like, I just want to compliment you guys, it's kind of like playing three-dimensional chess while blindfolded and glazing backwards. You guys do a remarkable job of it, and thanks to you and Jim for that very complex juggling act.
And it'll get, unfortunately, the traffic will get worse before it gets better. So, you know, some of the paving is buttoning up, but the slurry crews is the other part of that project, and that's a whole separate mobilization, probably looking like late June-ish, but that's being finalized, and we'll get some press releases out, and that'll, that's where we'll really start staggering streets. Unfortunately, they're in and out quickly, but if, remember, that has about a six-hour cure time, so the days they're in there, usually people are parking on the neighboring streets, so we'll do, you know, every other street so that people have reasonable parking near their house during the.
Did you say late June-ish?
July, sorry.
Oh, okay.
It's all, it's all.
Because we're out of there.
Yeah.
That water line's fading fast.
But more, yeah, more to come on exact dates, and when that comes, we'll, you know, put maps out and stuff and do door hangers and really up the outreach on that piece.
No other staff? Chief, you don't have anything?
No, I think just, kudos just to our entire staff, our detectives and our victims advocates. This weekend had a very busy weekend with some different and sad and unfortunate events, and they do a great job and really, really highlight the police department, kind of what the AG said, is also an empathetic organization. I think that's really important, that that's communicated to our community. Kudos to them.
Great. Chris, you don't have anything? Bill? Anne? Chase?
You're milking it, brother.
All right, well, I gave everybody an opportunity, so if.
You have to start over.
If there, if there is no further business to come before the work session, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you.